Oh, great. Yeah, he came in just after I came into the parking lot. Yeah, I saw you. Okay, great. Well, let's call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board. Today is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, with the City of Cape Coral Charter School, City of Cape Coral Council Chambers. And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. If we could start with our roll call.
Manaya.
Present.
Jackson.
Present.
Ataselli.
Present.
Long, District 6.
Here.
Michaels.
Present.
Stout.
Present.
Parent representatives, Hogland, OHS.
Present.
Shade, OMS, absent. Soto, OES, absent. Rousseau, OEN, absent.
Great, thank you. And if we could have a motion to approve the agenda or reorder the agenda?
I have a motion to move item 5B to item 5A and then approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. So we're gonna move, start with item 5B, request for approval for the amended bus lease agreement. And the thought there, Mark, was since that seemed to be more straightforward, we can get that one done faster, so that in case we had further discussion on the other one, we just have this one.
Okay, so this is, actually, this is the school bus lease agreement. It's not an amended agreement. This is the only one. I think as we, last week, we met, and you wanted it pulled out of the master lease, set aside as a standalone lease, and so we've done that. Is there, there, I mean, I don't, there's a, it's a five-year lease. The, it's for seven school buses, and we anticipate we'll end up doing this again, but at this point, this is the lease, and, you know, the, the payment schedule is identified for us to make the payments, and so is there any questions about the lease or something about the lease that is, that you don't understand or et cetera?
Questions about the bus lease?
No questions for me. I had a chance to review it. Mr. Moriarty and I discussed it over the weekend, and it seems fair and residual value from the buses, but to ultimately go back to the charter school for additional buses at the end of the lease, that seems adequate.
Yes, Miss Collins?
Mark, this is directed to you.
Yep.
Five years, does that seem like a reasonable amount of time to keep a bus? Should it be longer? Can we extend the lease if they're in good condition at the end of the charter lease period, or do you advise?
At the end of the lease period, ownership will reman to the City of Cape Coral. So we'll, we'll continue to have the leases until, I mean, it will continue to have the buses until such time as the, as the lease is paid off, but as far as the use of the buses, they, we'd probably more likely have to have a use agreement at some point in time, as opposed to the lease agreement. But, you know, the maintenance of the buses are already built into your bu, into your budget, so you're already maintaining the buses, but this is strictly to pay back the lease itself. I think it, I think it's probably important at some point that we either modify an agreement that we currently have, or maybe potentially look at this one, and, you know, for the term of the, of the bus, for how long we'll keep it. Because I expect that we, I mean, we're not turning these buses over at the end of five years and getting five new buses. We'll keep these for a good 10 years. That is the normal, that's the normal life expectancy of a school bus.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just had a clarification. I must have misunderstood. I guess my interpretation at the last meeting was that we were gonna move forward with putting both of these on the agenda in the event that we couldn't swallow it all whole under one modified master lease. Is that, did I miss something?
That was ultimately my goal, to put it inside the master lease. However, it appeared that the majority of the group would have preferred a separate lease, so we did a separate lease. The master lease does not have this as part of the, as part of the document, so.
Okay, all right. I thought that Jared said, hey, let's.
So there, you have two lease agreements here right now.
Crack at the master lease, and then if we don't agree, then we'll have this to fall back on, but I guess we're just jumping to this instead, which is fine.
Right, and we only thought that by moving it to the first part of the agenda, it's easier to get to a conclusion, and then if we have a longer discussion on the master lease, this is something that Mark needed done immediately, so we've got this one off, off the table. Now, now, if we approve the master lease, but as you mentioned, Mark, the ma, the, the master lease for everything else doesn't include this, correct?
It does not.
If you didn't draft it with contemplating this, then yeah, it needs to be done. I just, I, I misunderstood, I guess, from the last meeting. I thought we were gonna have this as a backup and take a crack at incorporating it in the master lease also, which is fine.
Okay.
Okay, someone make the motion to.
The reason why just is, if you actually spend a little time with the master lease, it's a real estate lease, and it's, all the provisions are based on real property, and so the logic of those provisions applying to buses didn't make a lot of sense. So in the end, it's not just adding it in. You'd also have to add in different provisions for insurance, that the use of premises is in there a lot, and the two didn't end up meshing very well.
That's fine. I wasn't challenging it. I was just curious, because I want to make sure we didn't do this and then.
Sure.
Get out of line. Okay, thank you.
So do we, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So we feel that this is better as a standalone lease and not incorporated?
Yes.
Do you feel the same? Or it doesn't matter enough? Move point?
How does this make you feel?
Right now, it's a moot point. I would have preferred that they all be wrapped into the one master lease. If the master lease is more real estate oriented, we could have carved something out to talk about a, you know, the equipment lease or something like that, but we're, at this point, we have two. We can just move forward with this. We'll take them back to the City Council and adopt both of them. It's fine.
Any additional questions? Okay, would like to make a motion to approve the.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we can get into the, the larger lease, the building lease, the buildings lease.
Okay, with this one, as previously discussed, recommending changing Article 4, Premises D, Maintenance, to reflect that the less C as opposed to the lesser shall continue to be responsible for the, for the maintenance, construction, reconstruction, et cetera, et cetera, associated with the charter school system and the charter school facilities. Understanding that currently, that the resources are not available, and that when resources are available, then the responsibility will devolve to you, but in the meantime, the city will continue to fund those until those resources are available. As I discussed the last time, this is primarily about additional funding that may or may not come from the school district, and I think it's important for us to recognize the duality of the, of the two groups, in that the city is not the schools, and that the charter school authority is the schools, and so, and it is the charter school authority that has the charter, well, actually, that we have the charter, but you are the charter schools, and that we recognize that you have responsibilities associated with that. I do, I am concerned, and I will, can be concerned, until such time as they recognize the fact that, you know, that they owe you the money, or they will provide you funding with that. However, I'm concerned that they will not if you have no responsibility for it. And so, changing the lease, it's been this way for a little over a year, changing it back, leaving it this way for the next five or six years, however long this is gonna be in place, until the school district either, you know, tries to, to re-up the half-cent sales tax or not, we have it available and we're ready to go. In the meantime, the city will continue to maintain the facilities to the extent that the funding is not available to do otherwise. And I, I seem to recall that there was some question as to the city being able to simply just do budget amendments or transfer money or something like that. I can safely tell you, we do not have the authority to do that. The school, the City Council does, however, the, we have policies in place, we have financial policies in place, and policies in place as to how you transfer money, and why you transfer money, and when you transfer money, and who produces transfer monies. And so, you know, even budget amendments, if there is a budget amendment, we have additional revenue that comes in. It might be earmarked for some specific thing, but it's not earmarked for necessarily maintenance. When I say additional funding coming in, it might be a grant or something like that. So I, I just want to make sure we understand that we have policies in place that restrict any of that kind of stuff happening, and the city just doesn't simply move money just to move money. If that was a concern, and it seemed to have been a concern, so I want to make sure that it's not a concern.
And would you like to, who would like to share the edits that were made and?
I have to be honest with you. I'm not sure what changed here, other than I think we added something about normal operations to pay for these items. Was that correct, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that, that's the second provision. It's actually just fixing the scribbler error that was, that's been in place for a long time regarding insurance.
So in Section D, at the top of page four, the operative language ultimately that was changed was that the authority will have the responsibility for the maintenance, repair, construction, reconstruction, improvements. Sorry, I'm on the wrong line. Has, when we, when the less C has sufficient funds that are specifically designated for use by the less C for such maintenance, repair, construction, reconstruction, in which funds are not specifically encumbered for the normal operations to pay for these items. Sorry, that took me a second to find where it's at. And then until such time as less C has those funds, less will do the work for that.
And how, how would the reserves be handled in this case? Who, who would decide that it can come out of reserves, because we have reserves?
Well, the board. The board would make that decision, and the City Council ultimately, who has the authority over the budget, would also make that decision. And so if there was reserves, and we recommended that you do something with the reserves, it's your choice to do it or not do it.
Okay, right. So I guess that, that's the que, is, when, when we, when we're saying that until such time that less C has these sufficient funds, who determines if we have those sufficient funds? Like, how, I guess I'm not, not sure how are reserves treated? So I, I believe we're, I may be incorrect, but that the latest audit has, has an additional 4 million going to reserves? Is that correct?
I haven't actually seen it. I'll have to look at it.
3.6.
3.6 million. So I guess that, that's how, who, who decides that? That, that we have sufficient funds to pay for the air conditioner, or now we have to buy, you know, other capital improvements?
I think the board would make that final decision on whether they have sufficient funds. However, I can say that, you know, if we think you have sufficient funds, I'm hoping, you know, that there would be some understanding as to whether the funds are available, because we have to be mindful of the fact that reserves are not generally used for recurring expenses, i.e. things that you purchase every single year. We have set up policies in the financial policies to set aside some of this money for future replacement of books, for furniture, and things like that. And so those are your responsibility, and those are some of the reserves that we've set up as far as the financial policies are concerned, which you adopted, I want to say, last year. And so those are, and so anything in excess of that, you know, we'd probably have the conversation, said, oh, right now, it looks like you have sufficient reserves, but do we want to use it for that? Or do we want to wait for when you have a recurring revenue source that is likely to be used for some of those purposes? As an example, maybe the city isn't prepared to replace carpets, but you are. Okay, so you have the resources to replace, replace the carpets. However, our evaluation of the facilities is carpets don't need to be replaced today or this year. That's just simply a discussion that we would have with you all.
Other questions?
For the people that drafted this, especially Karen, do you feel that the safeguards from the liability in the future, the wording that we interjected into?
I think this language is significantly better than it was originally, but if there was an opportunity to manipulate the language or try to say that the authority was required to pay for something when it wasn't specifically intended by this, sure, because contract language isn't always perfect.
Yes, sufficient is kind of a ambiguous term as well. That's why I think we had the same issue, but.
Right, yeah. Why, for, for me, it's, it's a couple of things. We're, we're about to go into a rather rigorous strategic planning initiative, that we brought on a consultant to really help us through our strategic planning, and I'm sure the finance side of it, the HR side of it, and a number of other areas are gonna be part of that strategic plan, and it will give us a little more time to deliberate, are there any trade-offs that we have here? As always, I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have the, the service level agreements in place, because that, 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 that gives us a little more comfort, and, and I, I don't necessarily know, by not having service level agreements in place, how that'll affect our, our comfort and confidence, that when we're all gone, the next board, or when Mark's gone, or when the mayor's gone, or when this city council's gone, that that school board from, you know, 10 years from now, will be able to operate effectively with this. So, so that, that's, that, that's my concern, that we have a very thorough strategic planning scenario coming up for us, where we'll have time to see if, if there's other issues that we haven't contemplated yet. But again, that's, that's one person's perspective, and, you know, each of you, however you feel, that we, do you feel we're ready? So I think if we're at the point that we can make a motion to approve this lease as is, great, then we could second it, have discussion, and then take a vote, or if you want to have a little further discussion before someone makes a motion.
Well, I mean, the reality is, is that this, these changes in this lease are not urgent. They don't, these do not have to be done today. The bus lease was very urgent, and if there are concerns still from any of the board members, then they should take that into consideration on any motion, seconds, or voting. If, if there is a belief that this language is too loose and, and doesn't provide enough certainty on the funding, then my opinion is that you shouldn't vote for it, but that's how you feel.
Other thoughts? Miss Collins?
So maybe I can offer some clarification when I, when we're considering the budget and the funding that we get from the state of Florida. We get about a 1.5 million in PICO funding, and that is for these capital improvements that we're talking about, generator replacement, a, you know, any kind of AC, major, these major things. And that's, and, and that is primarily our lease payment. So what we get goes out. There's nothing left over essentially from the, the PICO funding. So if there's any kind of operational funding that's left, it comes from FEFP, which is designated to the benefit of the students in certain categorical allocations for the students. So as we stand now, even if we get another, I don't know, $100,000 in PICO funding, it's not gonna go very far. I don't know what the PICO funding is projected to look like. I don't think Mark has an idea yet either, because it's changing, and it's going to come from the school district. So I think, I mean, we, we just don't know what to expect. I, I can't imagine it being terrific for us, and we get, you know, an influx of, of that, that capital funding. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mark? I mean, it's pretty limited as, as it stands now, and I don't see any grandiose opportunity for an influx of that money until the Surtax referendum comes back around, which Lee County, we were at their meeting, has said, we can't afford not to live without it, so it's coming back around. So that's the only influx of funds that I see coming in, and we don't even know how much that will be. Might only be a couple hundred thousand, might, might, it just depends. So it's very uncertain.
I do want to point out that although the FEFP is categorical in some natures, it can be used for maintenance of the facilities, and, and other charter schools do it. Everybody does it, and the school district does it, so it's, it can be used for maintenance. The, the PICO funding is, was designed for two things. One, for, to allow charter schools to lease space, to build schools, to do all of that kind of stuff. The state of Florida is, for whatever reason, years ago, restricted the, the amount of the PICO funding, and so, yeah, we're at $1.5 billion now, and that hasn't changed for a couple of years, and so, but I don't want anybody to think that the FEFP funding is not available for other things, because it can be used for that purpose. In this case, I, I'll just remind you again, when you read the first sentence, when less C, that be you, has sufficient funds that are specifically designated for use by less C for maintenance, repair, construction, et cetera, et cetera, in which funds are not now currently used for annual operations, then we would use them for those items that we just identified, as long as you've identified that that's what you're gonna use them for. Now, again, City Council can override any of this, so at the end of the day, you can have this lease. They still have the authority to override your budget, but I'm not saying that they're going to. I'm not even suggesting that they will, but we have an ordinance that trumps this lease when it comes down to the actual operations of the charter school authority. You know, I happen to agree with Board Member Michaels. You know, you can interpret whatever you can interpret, but I think the language we put in here by putting the less C, the responsible party, and identifying the responsible party for designating the funds for the items that we've identified, pretty much puts the control with you all.
Maybe I'm echoing some of the comments that have already been made, but the half-cent sales tax was, is primarily designed for construction projects. It's separate and distinct from the PICO funding, so there was nothing nefarious with wanting to revise this language to recognize the fact that if the sales tax was made available to the city, which by statute it is now, we wanted to close the, the opening, that the school board could say, the city is on the hook to pay for the construction or the capital improvements of the city's schools. The city owns the charter, the city owns, the city holds the charter, the city owns the properties. So that was, we were trying, that was the intent.
That is the intent.
We wanted to close the, the gap, if you will, for somebody on the school board to say, that is not a traditional public school. You are not gonna qualify, because on your own language, city, you're responsible for the upkeep of the buildings. We wanted to put a provision in there that we could say, no, we're not. Look at our lease, and that was, that was the intent of that. So I, I, I'm not sure why, if I may characterize it as an adversarial relationship, it's, it's the city owns the charter, that the, the authority runs the, the schools on behalf of the city, and that's the intent, in my view, when I was asked to write this. That was the idea or the concept that we were trying to articulate in this provision.
Any other questions?
I have one more. Mark, do you think that the verbiage that is in here now would safeguard and allow us to receive those additional funds?
Oh, absolutely.
This, this wording is.
Absolutely. I mean, it, this wording changes how we end up budgeting for your capital improvements. We'll actually include them in your budget, and, you know, right now, they're not. Right now, you don't show that you have any capital items out there, but you will, but at the end of the day, the agreement still says that the city will take care of it until you have the resource to do it yourself.
In a 2028 referendum, it might include the charters, and it will include the charters, probably won't be activated until 2029. The actual funding would probably come into place one year later. At least that's how it happened the last time around. It took one year from, so, so again, is this urgent? No. Does it have the language that we need? Possibly. Do we have the service level agreements in place? Mark's gonna present that right after this. To this point, we do not have service level agreements, and, and we have a strategic planning session coming up. We'll, we'll be able to deliberate even more if we'd like. So with that, would someone like to make a motion to approve this lease?
I'd motion to approve the second amended master lease agreement.
Anybody like the second? Second? Any further discussion? Okay, if we could have, maybe this one's important enough to do it by name.
Manaya.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Ataselli.
No.
Long.
Aye.
Michaels.
No.
Stout.
Yes.
Ty.
Motion fails. Still pending? Okay. Could you repeat that?
Yeah, if you had a motion, it's failed. You didn't have a clean draw.
Right.
Then the item number 5A, or, you know, 5C is still pending, hasn't been devolved.
Right.
So before you give directions, does anybody want to make another motion with regard to the addition of this amendment of master lease? Postponing items? How, what direction does this board want?
Sure. And for us to move to 5C to get clarification there that might inform 5B, would that, or do we have to make it right now?
Motion that was approved by the board at the previous meeting is filed by C now.
Right. Sure. So we could table this to a future meeting, or we could have someone else make another motion?
Right.
And, and to table this, we, we need a motion for that?
Yes.
And to table it, we would need a kind of date when we would reconsider it, yes?
Well, if I only can table it, if we're just gonna move it, let's see, if I put it on page 16, and then pick it up at the end of the meeting.
At the end of this meeting.
Yeah, and, and I mean, my, my perspective is postponing it till after our strategic planning session would be wise, from my perspective, but I can't make that motion, right?
I would like to make a motion to move this item till after the strategic planning. I don't know what the date is for that, but if someone's got that.
14.
November 14th.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, so we have the last item.
I didn't put it on the agenda, so I'll need a little bit more understanding of why it's here. I told you all at the last meeting that I probably wouldn't have these finished until October, so not sure exactly why they're here. October, so not sure exactly why they're here. At the same time, we have an incoming, new city manager incoming, so I think we're going to evaluate these SLAs and make a determinate and then we'll come back to you and talk to you at a later date.
Great, thank you, Mark. And just, you're playing two roles, right? You're playing the finance role, the HR role.
Mm-hmm.
Are we presently looking for an HR director or?
Yes, we are.
We are. Is, are we finding it very challenging in today's environment to find candidates?
We are not.
We're not? Oh, so we're, we have some that we're interviewing and?
We are not. We're utilizing an outside agent to, to do the work, a recruiter, and so, they're, it's posted out there, they've gotten candidates that have applied and so, we don't expect that it will be an issue hiring somebody. Although, I'm kind of liking the job.
Great, all right, so, and that helps us, right? Because if the service level agreements are forthcoming and whether it's October or later, we have until November before we're going to take this back up, so we'll see how that plays out.
I mean, I'll remind you, you already have one, it's finance. So, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, there's others, granted, but you have one. It's mine. So, is there, was there an issue with that?
With what?
With finances, SLA with you all? I mean, because you have one.
I think there was, we have a number of SLAs, right?
Yeah, not just finance.
I mean, we provided you four of them. Board Member Michaels made comments about three of them, but, you know, so, I mean, we have them, you have them.
I made comments about all four.
I'm sorry?
I made comments about all four.
I don't recall one on finance, so I'll have to go back and listen to that meeting.
Okay, is the one you're referencing, the financial services service level agreement?
Correct.
Yeah, the, the two specific comments I had, one was the regular hours of support, didn't say anything about holidays, but you all might want that. But the overarching comment I had about all of the SLAs is that there's, it's sort of missing the third primary component of an SLA, which is what happens if the SLAs are not met? Like, what is the?
It's a good question. I think we're probably going to have to have something back from the school as well because there's certain responsibilities on the school side with regard to the SLAs. It's not just our service to you all, it's your service back to us. And so, you know, and we'll, we'll have to have a further conversation about that particular SLA at some point in time, but, you know, we'll, we can work through that.
Yeah, I'd a minimum typically would have some sort of an escalation process or who talks to the, if there are.
Yeah, we, yes, we have some of that already that's in our ordinance with the, with the city, so, I mean, with the charter school authority, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any, any further comments?
I have, I think that part of the reason why the board wanted the SLA is, I think that some of the service levels are not up to par, they're, we're not, at least in a timely manner. So, I think that having that in writing and knowing what's expected and what the ramifications are is the point of it. Am I correct, Dr. Manaya? That's why you would like to see?
Okay, but I've asked that question, I've asked that question on several different occasions that we've had this conversation. What issues are we having? And when we do have an issue, we generally pounce right on it and so, I haven't heard of any issues.
Timing issue is what I'm hearing and I'm hearing it from staff mostly. So, it's hearsay and it's not necessarily the truth and I'm not going to the side of the city either.
Sure.
So, I'm not taking a position on that, please understand, but that is what I'm hearing, so it appears that there is an issue with the service level agreements as they are because timeframes are not being met properly. So, I think that's why we need something more concrete and we're looking for it sooner rather than later. You had mentioned that you were thinking, you told us, end of October, correct? Are you going to have time to speak with the new city manager and go over these by that point?
We, yes.
Okay, so can we get a concrete time that by the end of October, we'll have service level agreements to look at and more than the ones that we have?
October 31st, let's, let's throw that one out there unless something changes.
Okay, and we have Mrs. Collins involved with these agreements as well. Who's the mediator between the service level agreement that we're making, the department head and Mrs. Collins?
I don't know that we have a mediator, I think if anything, it's the charter school liaison, which would be Connie Baron.
Okay, and everybody's getting together and we're coming up with appropriate?
At this point in time, I've not had any, any conversations, I've not had any feedback with regard to the information that we've provided other than from Board Member Michaels.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, I've not heard of any, anything else.
I see. Like I said, my feedback is, is coming mostly from staff, which is different. So, would it be okay for me to maybe bring some of that feedback to you?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
I was going to add that I can, Karen and I can sit down, I can grab her notes, I can summarize the notes and then meet with the different, meet with Mark and then meet with the different departments and just add on some of the, the little, the concerns, emergency and things like that. I'm happy to do that before the November meeting.
Fantastic, and that'll, that'll inform our strategic planning session as well, so, I mean, it's all helpful. I mean, the goal is how do we maintain an excellent structure and system over time? And each year, you know, we learn a little more to get us a little further ahead and it's okay that we're not exactly there today, but as long as we're making progress and we appreciate everyone who is assisting us with the lease agreements, with the service level agreements and as this board reframes itself, because November, we are going to reorganize, there will be a new chair, a vice chair and whatever assistance you may need from, from the rest of the board members as you take on your roles, you know, we're here to provide that, that additional support. So, great, should be some exciting two or three months coming up. Anything else before we adjourn? Going once, going twice. Next meeting, see? Thank you, Mrs. Collins, she had to whisper that. Next meeting is on October 10th, 5:30, Cape Coral City Council, Chambers. Okay, great, meeting adjourned. Thank you.